Craig, you look like you're in the dark.
Yes, I am. The lighting is not good tonight. See what I can do here. Roll call, please.
Okay, so it's February 1st, 5:30 PM. The roll call. Craig Borba.
Present.
Juanita Garner.
Here.
Al Jones.
Here.
Ed McBride.
Present.
David Norgard.
Present.
Everyone is here.
Great. Roman numeral two, acceptance of the agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
Moved.
A second. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, roll call, please.
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Juanita Garner.
Yes.
Al Jones.
Yes.
Al, Ed McBride.
Yes.
David Norgard.
Yes.
Ed and I do look alike, so we get confused frequently.
Those two letters, just look. You have accepted the agenda, and the agenda was posted before 5:30 PM on January 25th.
Great, thank you. Roman numeral three, public comments. Jeannie, do we have anybody there besides Bill?
We have some guests, and if you are attending and you would like to give public comment, use the raise hand icon, and I'll let you, I'll call on you to.
And Jeannie, I may not see that, so if you can give me a heads up.
I've got two people watching, so I'm just wanting to make sure if they want to give public comment that they have the opportunity.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay, Roman numeral four, consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Somebody wanted. Thank you, Juanita. Okay, any discussion on the consent agenda? Any questions, concerns? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Ana Garner.
Yes.
Al Jones.
Yes.
Ed McBride.
Approved, yes.
David Norgard.
Yes.
Five to zero passes, thank you.
Thank you. Roman numeral five, administrative reports. Is Nancy here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Nancy, do you want to start? I'm representing the Friends of the Library, please.
Nancy, you're cut, you are off mute, so can you try again?
Okay. We have the, on March 30th. Second, your friends.
Nancy. Nancy, you're cutting out real bad.
Okay.
Oh.
So she dropped. Maybe she's gonna call back in, I'm guessing.
Yeah, we'll see if she can get back on. If you want to pass her up and then come back to her.
Let's go to 5B, Palm Springs Public Library Foundation.
Yes, thanks, Craig. David is out of town on, on a business trip, so he asked me to fill in, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity. We have spent the last month primarily assimilating new members, and I think Ed and Al at the last meeting saw some of the folks that we brought in, and this, this week, we had another orientation session. Last week, we had three other people. So there'll be six more new faces at our next meeting on February 9th. That brings the board membership to 18. We think we're, we're in pretty good shape in terms of critical mass. It would be nice to have someone with a legal background, but we think we've got some really talented people. I had the opportunity to sit in on the last two orientations, and we've got a really good mixture of some younger people, some experienced people. Everybody is very enthusiastic about the renovation project, and I know Jeannie's met with all of them, so we thank her for participating, giving a tour and a nice presentation at those orientation sessions. We did form, well, the, the, the next big challenge, of course, is getting everyone, channeling that enthusiasm and that experience, and putting them in the right spots where they feel they can contribute and, and they will contribute. And so our committee structure is very important to us now, and you'll probably start to see some of that coming out after the 9th of February. But we did create a new committee at the January meeting, and that's the advocacy committee. And I think that's going to be a great shot in the arm for all of us to have a person. Rebecca Allarti is our chairperson, and she's going to spearhead along with, with David and some others the activities that we want to promote, the renovation, we want to promote the library fundraising, and we want to make sure that the city and the community is knowledgeable about our enthusiasm and the need to, to keep things moving as best as, as we can. So that's that. And then I think Craig mentioned earlier before the formal meeting started that we have a interesting fundraising opportunity that Robin from our board brought to us with two gentlemen who are opening their home over by the, the tennis club near Spencer's Restaurant. There's going to be a brunch on April 1st. I hope you all got a save the date email, and it, it looks to be a nice sort of informal brunch activity. Obviously, that, that committee is doing a great job in getting things organized and the promotion out there, and they're brainstorming around how we fundraise in that type of a format. But we're, we're enthusiastic about the fact that we're doing something different, and, and, and we're moving forward on that. So, you know, more to follow, and appreciate all your support, and we're looking forward to the next months.
Thank you, Bill. Questions for Bill? Bill, when your new members are confirmed, can you send us a list of your membership of the foundation?
Yes, absolutely. We're, we're, we just got, we just got the details from the three, the last three yesterday, and we'll be putting together the master list, and once we do that, we'll get it, we'll get it over to you guys.
Great, appreciate it, thank you.
You bet.
Any other comments or concerns, questions for Bill? All right, thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
David has a comment or question.
Yeah, I simply wanted to congratulate you, Bill, on the arrival of six new board members. That sounds very encouraging and very good news. So again, congratulations.
Thank, thank you, David. Appreciate that. I think Robin Metcalf, who's in charge of our nominating committee with her HR background and, and her bias towards action, and David Sidley have really done a great job. And you know, what happens, of course, is when you get a couple new members on, and then they think about who else might be good at that, that they know in their own personal network, and so it, that one person has led to others, and, and so far, so good. I think all of them are, I don't think we have a clunker in the bunch.
Yeah, great, great.
Excellent.
Craig, Craig, Nancy is back.
Oh, great. So we'll go back to 5A. Nancy?
Yep, okay, well, we'll try this again.
You are, hi Nancy.
Hi, how you doing?
Great.
Okay, so we'll try this again. As I was saying, Jeannie had already mentioned, we're having Palm Springs Speaks for the first time since COVID. We're having Al Franken, March 31st. Hopefully, all of you will be interested and buy tickets. They are selling fast, as she mentioned already. I think it just came out yesterday, and already 100 tickets have been sold. So off to a great start. So there you go. Then, let's see, we have, pardon me.
What's your capacity?
Eight hundred and, possibly 800.
Okay, great.
Yep. And let's see, we had a book sale last Saturday, and it was just a quick, just to unload some of the books that we have over at the Frye Building. So we just did a quick sale, and bring a tote bag, you get $3 to fill up the tote bag, you bring a box, you got $5 for the box. People loved it. We had over 50 people waiting in line when it opened, and we sold about $1,200 worth of books in three hours, so that was great. We also have a Modernism event coming up. It's going to be in Indian Wells. The tickets are selling a little slow for that. I don't know if it's because it's not in Palm Springs and it's a little further out. However, you know, we've done Rancho Mirage before, and it sold out, but Indian Wells is a little bit further, so we'll see how that goes. We still have, you know, three weeks or so to sell tickets, so if any of you are interested in that, tickets are available. Other than that, we have our annual meeting. We haven't actually set the date yet, but it's coming up soon, so we'll let you all know about that. And I think that's all I have to say today.
Great, thank you, Nancy. Questions for Nancy? Okay, we're good. And the tickets for the, the home is how much?
I think they were $65.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to Roman numeral 5C, library staff. Jeannie, this is you.
Um, Jeannie, just quick, the tickets are $60, Nancy.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Save $5 now.
Yeah, they're on sale tonight.
Forever. At modernismweek.com, I think. So, yeah, Palm Springs Speaks, Speaks is, ticket sales are going great. You can get your tickets at palmspringspeaks.org. You can, we have a link on our library website, or we will, we don't, but we will. You click through. Very excited about this. It's a fundraiser that completely benefits the Friends of the Palm Springs Library, which completely benefits the library, so we're excited to get the speaker series going again, and I'm very happy about the, the quick ticket sales, so yeah, very excited, very, very, very excited. Just a reminder, President's Day is this month, and Monday, February 20th, the main library will be closed, and Wellwood Murray Memorial Library will be open. And just always like to mention holiday closures. We've got Mahjong Open Play. We started that last week, and we had 14 people, and today we had 17 people. So if you are, if you've taken any, any, you know how to play Mahjong, or you're interested, this is a great opportunity to sharpen your skills and have a good time. Wednesdays from 2 to 4, and at the same time, we had our children's program, after-school program, and our teen time, and the place was packed. It was lovely. I loved it. I loved seeing all the kids and the excitement. So that's what's really going on. We've got another program. We are partnering with the Human Rights Commission to do a special storytime on February 18th at 11:00 AM, and we'll get some more information about that at some point soon. But that's a partnership with the Human Rights Commission to do a special National Day of Reading storytime. So that will be happening, and then February 22nd, we've got Michael McCarty coming at 1:30 PM, and he is a fabulous storyteller. And that is in celebration of Black History Month, and I, I have known him for 20 years. He's an amazing storyteller, so any, all ages would enjoy this program. And then Julie, do you have any other, you've got a program next week, I know for sure, that's interesting.
Yeah, thank you. So several things coming up. We have a great speaker coming. Her name's Barbara Gothard. She's an artist as well as a speaker, and she's going to be sharing about, and that's on Tuesday, the 7th, I should say, at 6 o'clock. And she's going to be sharing about the African-American homesteaders in the Mojave Desert. So that should be very interesting. She's going to bring some of her artwork. So it's a multimedia kind of presentation, so that'll be fun. And then later this month, we have, we're going to host Home Movie Day again. So if you have old home movies in various forms, in Super 8, or on VCR, or whatever, bring them in, because they're going to bring experts over from Los Angeles, and they're going to bring all sorts of equipment, and they're going to look at your films, tell you ways to keep them safe and take care of them. They're going to screen bits and pieces of it for you. It's really a fun activity, and it's, it's amazing, all the fun little tidbits you will find when people bring out their home movies. So that's a free event at the library on Saturday, the 20, 25th, 25th. And then the people that are presenting that are actually going to do a lecture on February 22nd here at the library on Wednesday evening, and they're just going to talk about, you know, why home movies are so important and their impact on communities. And so if you're kind of just wondering about that whole process, come to the lecture on Wednesday, the 22nd, and then come to Home Movie Day. Bring your home movies. Starts at 1 o'clock at the library that Saturday. So lots of great things coming up, and of course, we have our virtual author events. So lots of programs to partake of here at the library in February.
Great.
And I remembered one more thing, and I'll put this out for all of you. I am going to be one of several presenters at the Deepwell Estates Neighborhood Organization's annual meeting. So I too can do your neighborhood organization annual meeting and tell a little bit about the library, and I think it's a great way to get, get out in the community and just answer questions, but also tell them about all the, in three minutes or less, all the great things we have to offer at the library.
Great.
So just keep that in mind. If you or your neighborhood has a, a meeting, you want me to come and give a presentation, I'd be happy to do that, or your service organization.
And I did have one more thing not yet announced, but I'm going to tell you now. So you're the first to know. We're going to be installing in, later in November, later in February, excuse me, an exhibit down at the Wellwood. It's going to be a two-month exhibit about the author Edgar Rice Burroughs, famous for his Tarzan story. So stay tuned to learn more about that, but that is coming at the Wellwood very soon later this month.
Any questions for library staff? Okay, thank you so much for that information. Let's go to Roman numeral 6, treasurer's report.
Okay, yes. Most of what we have to say is going to be under item 7A. That's what Juanita and I spent a lot of time with Julie. But the, the summary sheet you have is on page nine. There's nothing remarkable in terms of changing from the last month to this month, unless I've missed something, Julie, but it's, it's been pretty much cleaned up, but it's about the same, just regular, normal, nothing, nothing unusual.
No, nothing unusual.
Okay, I think we need a motion to accept.
Can I motion, make the motion to accept a treasurer? I don't know.
Don't think so.
Pardon me? I don't.
I'm hoping one of our other board members will step forward.
I move to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
Thank you, David. Someone else, give me a second, please.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Juanita. Okay, I need further discussion on the treasurer's report. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Juanita Garner.
Yes.
Al Jones.
Yes.
Ed McBride.
Yes.
David Norgard.
Yes.
Five to zero, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the item that's somewhat connected, which is Roman numeral 7, discussion item regarding the 2324 library budget. Or Juanita, can you speak to this?
Do you want me to start, Juanita, and then you pick it up? Yeah, very quick. You, you have the one-page summary that Jeannie sent out to you, where we actually met as an ad hoc group with Juanita, and I did. And you'll find that we made a number of recommendations, both under the library trust funds and the main library funds. No change to the Wellwood Murray Library, but only to the two. Juanita, you want to speak to the library trust fund recommendations?
Hal, I'm trying to find my notes, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I'll keep, you want me to keep going? Okay, all right. The library trust funds, we zeroed out travel, training, and dues. We zeroed out materials and supplies. We created a new account, library renovation, and we transferred $1 million into that account. And that is listed, when you have the other form, you'll find it is for the library renovation. If you look, you've got three documents. You've got the detail, I can't, don't know how quick, I don't know where to show this. Anyway, this is the one I'm referring to. You can see the $1 million right there into the trust fund, specifically for the renovation, which is all it can be used for anyway, and we allocated $10,000 for the, for the trust fund book account from the Croppitzer Trust Account. I can never say that name. And you'll see the other additions, allocating additional $10,000 for library books for the future library projects account. We set aside almost $82,000 for the future library projects account to be saved for future projects, for those things that we couldn't identify, but we know will occur. And $500,000 for the library foundation support. I think the library foundation will be very pleased with that. And the balance of all, all of the trust fund line items would be to match the trust fund balance, of course. Shall I continue, Juanita, or did you want to pick? Okay, pick up, you want it?
No, that's, that's fine. Keep going, I'm just watching.
Okay, on the main library funds, Jeannie convinced us that she needed an administrative secretary. She pleaded, actually. She was unbended knee, wasn't she, Juanita? So we reluctantly, not really, I'm really kidding about that, but she needs assistance. So that was $141,000, and that includes benefits, that salary and benefits annually. Requesting a new office setup for the new position, and the unfunded librarian archivist position of $10,000, and dedicating $25,000 annually for the Palm Springs Speaks Speaker Series, and holding funds and material supplies for that, you know, for the account for the library, and requesting $10 million for non-grant funded renovations at the main library. And then there are no budgetary changes. So that's really our recommendation. You've got all of that summarized. The big sheet, one thing I would add, the big sheet that you had with the blue columns, again, I don't know if I, you can see, anyway. When you look across the only items over which the library has really any control are those that are highlighted in blue. Everything else is pretty much set by the city. So we have very, you know, very little authority, and Jeannie does very little authority over a whole lot of the, the line items. They just come out fairly straightforward, like contractual services, utilities, and salaries and leaves and so forth. So just wanted you to, to know that. So that was it. I think that is in a nutshell. I don't know, Jeannie, or Juanita, if you have anything to add to that.
I, I just wanted to say that, you know, going through this with Jeannie and her real, her real need for administrative assistance, I mean, that's definitely something that, that has to happen. There's no doubt about that. She needs that extra help, so she could do all the other things that are coming with this renovation. Hopefully, a renovation of the library is going to be even more important that she have that administrative assistant. But also, something that we learned when we were with Jeannie was that the money that, that she doesn't spend goes back to the general fund. So it doesn't actually, the library doesn't get to, doesn't roll over, it doesn't, you know, so and she's telling us that she always comes in under budget. I'm like, no, 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 we got to spend that money. So that was something that, that I just wanted to mention. And that, that's all, that's really all I have to add.
But let me follow up on what Juanita, because I made a note when we met with Jeannie too. This whole issue of the unspent funds returning to the general fund as opposed to rolling over into the library account. We had some thoughts, you know, is it possible for us to make a proposal under the budget to retain a percentage in recognition of good stewardship of the funds? I mean, can we present some type of a, a motion or recommendation to the city to consider, particularly in anticipation of the renovation, and they're going to need some of you there? Is there a way to keep not only all of it? That would be my preference, but also to roll over a percentage, allow us to keep 75% or 80%, 90%? Anyway, that was something we had, we wanted to present for your consideration as well. Thank you for reminding me. That was my last page.
Okay.
Jeannie has raised her hand to speak.
I'll open it up for questions. I'm going to say Ed first, please.
I think I have four questions for the committee. First question, first thing, let me say, I, I think it looks very good. The budget looks wonderful. Thank you for the work you did on that. I think my first question slash discussion, I noticed that the library foundation, half a million dollars. And then is that in response to their request to us for a grant earlier this year, or is that what you guys think seems reasonable? Where, where did that number come from, I guess, is my question about that?
That number came from their request. So that was their request for their, their huge, their, their fundraising.
Okay, the million dollars for the library renovation. And, and Jeannie, I think that you're going to have to chime in on this one as well. So we have a million dollars in the trust fund that we're, we're saying to the city that we're going to take towards the library renovation. Would that money be the traditional expenditure where we, the, the city sends us a bill, we pay it, or are we thinking that that's a million dollars that we would give to the foundation because of their flexibility and have them spend that money for projects? By the way, what I mean by that is, I don't mean to like give it to them, but say, this money is to go towards blank. It's more of a reserved account. What's the thoughts on that?
My thought was that it would just go into the city's renovation project fund and be spent with the project. But you all can decide. This, this was really a suggestion and first draft for you all to discuss and, and say what you wanted to do. I felt like, in my recommendation, I felt like it was important to pledge money to the renovation, and however you want to do it, if you want to pledge it to the foundation as part of their capital campaign kickoff, you could say, we pledge a million, and that would be a nice start. You can do whichever you want. And then the half a million too, it was last year, I mean, well, currently this year, what did we lose? $30,000 in investment, so it would be nice to before it's all lost, you know? It's not going to lose it all, but you know.
My, my thoughts to you all is, I think that this presents an opportunity that we haven't had in some time, where the half a million dollars, I'm, I'm not so much, I mean, they've asked us for this grant. I think that we, we've heard from them on how they would use this, and that's a whole different discussion. But I think it would be maybe something we say to them is that we're, we'd like to give you a million dollars to go out and find some, another match of a million dollars to go towards this project. You know, because they would have that flexibility more so than just writing a check to the city, right? They might be able to go out into the community and ask a major donor, we got a million dollars from the trustees, let's match that, right? And double that money for projects. I mean, so that, that's just my thoughts. I, I, but I'd like to plant that seed. I guess my last question, Jeannie, is the, the narrative says that you're requesting 10 million for non-grant funded renovations at the main library. So that's 10 million on top of what the state has given us, what our trust fund will give us, so that the, is, is that your thought? So is there a number that, that this all adds up to that you've got in your mind?
Okay, thank you, because that was why I had my hand up. I was like, I need to explain what I'm doing here. So I am putting in a request, but I, I've gotten feedback already from city manager's office that, that my request needs to go a different way. So I feel that it is very important that the city, the city has to know, we have to tell them, and everybody knows, the funds only cover infrastructure. City has to know, we have to tell them, and everybody knows the funds only cover infrastructure. Doesn't even include storage or movers or any of the things. So we need to budget this year, next year, and probably the year after that. Money to finish this project, because we're gonna be bare concrete floors if we don't, you know, find money to pay for the carpet. Or whatever, you know, there, there would be no cabinets and no desks or anything for the staff and no shelving. So we've gotta find the money and we have to budget it. So my request is a placeholder to start the discussion. Until we can find out a cost. So. I feel, I know it's gonna cost at least ten million more. I mean, it has, I. Tells me it's gonna cost more than ten million dollars on top of the thirteen million for infrastructure, at least. So we have to start the discussion. So I put a number in. Just to get us going. The city council will have to decide if that's the number they want to approve this year, or if they can afford it this year. Or if they want us to say, no, we'll do five this year, five next year, five the year after that, and then. You know, whatever. But we've got to do something. So I, I put in a number to say, I need to ask for some money. Speaking about my other items here, I am requesting administrative secretary. The library used to have one a long time ago. Before the two thousand eight economic downturn, and we haven't had one. And I haven't had one in ten years since I've been here. And it is time. I need help. Like, like I said, I need help because getting ready to do this giant renovation and I, I need some office help. The number two item on there is office furniture. So when we get new employees, we now have to also budget a one-time expense to buy them. Computers and desks and a cell phone or whatever it is. So. A chair. So they actually call it out now in, when people ask for new positions. So five thousand and that would be for the administrative secretary. And then five thousand would be for the position that was already funded this year. But we haven't hired, which is the librarian archivist position. So that's what that is, and it'll be five thousand for each position. And then I'm asking the city to consider dedicating twenty-five thousand dollars in my budget, in my operating budget. For programs to Palm Springs Speaks, instead of us having to do. The grants and sponsorship application every year, because it's really. Hard to plan if you don't know if you're gonna get the grant. And we did not get a grant one year. And so that was tough. So we had to figure out some way to make it work. So it would be better, we could have some stability in our, in our budget. And I just am asking for that. So that's what, that, just explaining what. Other questions?
Other trustees, do you have questions before I have my questions? Okay, I have a number of questions. Jeannie, when you close out your budget every year. How much is unexpended annually?
I should have gotten that number from my reports, but.
How much ballpark?
A hundred thousand dollars. Out of a three million dollar budget.
Okay, many years.
A lot of it is out of my control. Like I was saying, if you look at that chart and you see all the, the line items that are highlighted blue. Those are the ones that I can control. The other ones I cannot. So if there are salary savings. I don't get that, that money doesn't really mine to spend or transfer out. I can't transfer that money.
All the ones that are highlighted, you do have control.
Those are the only ones we have control over.
Yes.
So. It's when you, when you do the budget. Are you in a situation? That you can cut in each of those line items to come up to pay for the administrative assistant?
I wouldn't want to do that, because every year, a lot of our, our services that we pay for, they, they escalate. And I haven't even accounted for escalation in some of my expenses. So I make it work.
Maybe the carryover is not an issue. Maybe. Maybe there's not enough money there to worry about, right?
I try to spend as much as I can, so.
What I'm saying is, if you're able to come up with enough money by being tighter on your budget. Can you afford that administrative position?
I'm gonna ask the city to pay for it, whether I could scrape it out of my budget or it's that important to me.
So you're, this is gonna be an ask on your behalf. When we look at the main library funds, it's an answer, city.
Right.
Yes, yes. So it doesn't impact you as trustees or the trust fund at all.
Okay, I, I've been in your position many, many times as assistant superintendent, where I had to go back and cut my budget for things I wanted. And I ended up having to prioritize. So a lot of times I got no, so then I had to cut my budget. But maybe you might have some flexibility here. Not sure.
But I think the question is too, is she's a good steward. I mean, while we don't have control over a lot of the line items. She does spend, I, I mean, she does end up with a significant amount, a hundred thousand is significant. And but in a budget that big with operation this complex, that's great. I mean, you want to come in under budget. You don't want to exceed your budget because there's no money to fund it.
Yeah, my concern is the city's gonna see this request and say no. And then Jeannie's in the same position that she's in now and still giving money back to the city. Or she cut within her budget, she might have control over it and getting them.
No, yeah, I understand, yeah.
Okay, but, but the, let's say that hundred thousand dollars that she doesn't spend, it goes back to the city. The city gets it back anyway. So I don't see why the city would say no. To me, if they're gonna get the savings back anyway, they really shouldn't object.
Well, they shouldn't, but the chances is they, they will. So it's just another way of looking at it, Jeannie, that if they say no, then we cut the budget and, and fund the position with what you have. Especially for sending money back. And I know how frustrated.
Sometimes the money goes back because we get a grant. So, I mean, there, there are so many different factors with my. Some of the money that goes back, I know for a fact is my communication money, because we get ninety percent rebates, but we have to pay for it upfront. So we pay, and then eighteen months later, we get the rebate. So sometimes the, it's, it's little. Little weird things, like I, I don't, you know, that happens. Or an example this year is that our homework help database, we got a grant, so I get to save eighty-six hundred dollars. So I took that money and I moved it to the book budget and to pay for some other things.
But I, I am, I am intrigued by Craig's, I, I've been looking now at the budget more. I am intrigued by his suggestion. You know, you would have to carve out a hundred and forty-one thousand basically to cover it. And there's only a couple of items, the materials and supplies that we cover. Everything else is pretty well said. You know, you wouldn't want to cut printing or advertising, the grants, we have zero anyway. I'm not sure where you would pull it from. Communications is kind of a bare bones, my, I think, it's like twenty-eight thousand. The materials and supplies, four hundred thirty-four thousand. And you spent last year, and that's an increase. I'm looking for that. The actuals were like a hundred and twenty-two thousand, if I'm recalling. Or projected actuals for, that was last year. So I mean, you come close, I, I, I don't know. I, I guess as I go through it, Craig, I'm not sure where you cut.
Right.
In order to get to a hundred and forty-one thousand to fund the position.
Yeah, and that was my other question, the hundred and forty-one thousand, I was assuming that's benefits and.
Yeah, yes.
And everything. So what is, what is the actual salary for that position?
It's about fully, fully, when they've reached all seven steps, it's sixty-seven or seventy thousand dollars.
So we're paying twice as much.
Oh, yeah.
Our budget, our benefits are very expensive.
Yeah, and most public institutions, even when I was at the state university system. And we were always budgeting about thirty-five percent of benefits.
Yeah.
What you had to pay to account for and everything else. I, and that really jacks up the cost of a position, almost double.
And in the school district, we were at thirty-five percent, but this is fifty percent. And so that's the only reason.
We budget, it's usually about forty-eight to fifty-four percent. It's almost more. Pay the benefits. I can tell you exactly what they told me from finance. The position is. Oh, if, when it's fully, when they've fully stepped out of their, their top, top salary, seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Plus sixty-two thousand with benefits.
And how far does it, how long does it take to get to that final step?
Seven years.
Just seven.
You start at step one, and every year you get, if you perform according, you get five percent, you get a five percent rate, raise every year for the seven steps.
And looking at that, you really, you have no person now that you have to have a full time if they're not gonna give it to you?
Yes, support me on this one, Craig.
I, I support you. I just know how the city sometimes works.
Don't give them any ideas.
They don't put us on the burner.
But, but in this case, I think we have a good argument that was out of the norm, and that is with the pretending renovation. And all the additional workload associated with that, that Jeannie simply can't handle. And do it effectively with all of the other stuff that she needs to do. I, I just, I, I'm like you, Craig. You've heard me talk already to this many times. I don't trust city hall when it comes to budgets or pledges until they write the check. I, I'm really skeptical. You, you, you know that. I'm hoping for the best on this one too. I, I'm, I could share your skepticism and, and, but it is what it is, and we work within the structure as best we can.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it happens. That's a concern.
Yeah. I know.
All right, then Jeannie, I have a question for you relating to the work that was done on this document. Have we ever allocated out the money from the trust?
Oh, um. Yes, in the, in the past, we haven't done it to this level. But our finance, new finance system wants us to budget and allocate all of the money that's in the cash account. In the past, we just would say, well, we just want to spend some money on books and then leave the rest in future library projects. So this one, this one's really, and this was really special because of the renovation. Because normally that money would just sit in future library projects. And we really would, we really would just say twenty thousand for books. And ten thousand of that from the Croppitzer Trust.
Right.
Then you all could decide on the.
And, and that's what. Ed, you saw it the same way, correct? Okay.
And back to my, sorry, we've got, the carpet cleaners are here to try to do some work. So I'm getting interrupted. But just so you know, Craig and all of you, my FTE count at the library is fifteen point two five employees, counting me. So pre-two thousand eight, the FTE count, I think was twenty-five. So in all of those years, we, we, we were really cut back to nothing. We've never recovered, but we've gotten busier and busier at this library. And we serve more people and we do more things. And there's more technology and more, more things. So we need the people to be able to do the things. Unity. And so. I'm just, yeah, asking for that administrative help, but because I've got.
So I'd like, I'd like to couch it in this way, if possible. That administrative sector is needed because of the renovation coming up and expanded programs in the future.
Absolutely.
They don't cut back after the renovation's done.
Absolutely. We're gonna be busier than ever when we, when we become new and refreshed. There is a library, I don't know where it was, but they, somebody did a, a drone shot of a new library that opened somewhere. And the line was around the block to get in for the first day. So it just tells you, libraries are important.
That's why we're here.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions or concerns? Yes, David?
Thanks, thanks, Frank. I'm looking at the main library budget. And I'm looking specifically at the line for materials and supplies. My question is this, and I guess that's to either the committee or to Jeannie or to all. So i- i- if I'm reading this correctly, the projected actual at the end of twenty-two is two sixty-four. Twenty-three budget, three ninety-nine, and a modest proposed increase from that to twenty-four of four thirty-four. Here's, here's what I'm curious about. Does this line, materials and supplies? Is it entirely outward facing in the sense that these are books and CDs and whatever else? They're circulated or referenced or whatever? Or does it also include, or even primarily include? What would be administrative in nature?
To answer your question, it is all. Outward facing, so. And it includes fifty line items of details. What used to happen in the past is that we would have an office supply account, and we would have a special events account and all these things. And with our new finance system, they put it into one account, which is why it looks huge. But it's office supplies, postage, library cards, media, processing supplies, our movie license. I'm just reading some highlights for you.
What you've said so far sounds administrative in nature.
Well, but it serves the public. It's not staffing or things like that, but.
No, I understand it's not staffing, but I, I guess what I'm getting at, is besides book acquisition and really. Purchase of other materials for circulation and reference. How, how much of the four thirty-four? It, it is non-programmatic, maybe that's a way to put it.
Okay, because we do have our programs in there. We spend, I, I'm looking at this current year. Programming twenty-eight thousand five hundred, just for programming. For books, media, let's see, books, DVDs. We spent two hundred and forty thousand dollars on books and media. We spent on databases. In databases, seventy-five thousand, six hundred. But then if we need to replace a printer or a PC, we've got a little bit of money in there. Outreach supplies. Yeah, DVD cleaning supplies. I think I said that already, but.
Uh, Jeannie, when I'm looking at that line item, when I'm looking at that line item, the actuals for twenty-twenty-two was two hundred and forty-one thousand. And then your projected for the twenty-twenty-three budget is almost four hundred thousand. That is over a sixty percent increase.
I'm wondering why that number, it looks the way it does, because there. I don't know that that's, well. I don't know why that's the way it is, because I don't believe that, that's accurate.
But, but it takes you back to Craig's, and that's the one I was looking at earlier, the materials and supplies, theoretically. Based upon our actual expenditures, you could fund the hundred and forty-one thousand and still have more money left over. Well. I mean, you only spent two hundred and sixty-four thousand.
I, I think it was because my budget was cut. My, when we were during, during the pandemic, my budget was slashed in half. And we, our book budget was cut in half and we, we laid off staff. It was a mess. So we were slashed in our budget.
But all of that would come in terms of the, 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 I mean. Salaries and benefits. I don't know, I'm, I'm still, I've been, I, once Craig, you raised it. I, I keep looking at that particular item and thinking that's a rather significant increase.
It, it's because they had cut our budget and, and all of our accounts were separated and they merged it all together. It's, please don't look at numbers and think that we can operate on that. It's, it's heartbreaking to have. I, I'm asking, honestly, you, you don't have any. Control over the library budget, the city council does, but I, I bring it to you as my trustees to, to offer your support. And for that, not necessarily to ask me to cut my budget.
Ju- ju- just one follow-up, if I may, before we move on, Craig. So I know you've had experience in other places and, you know, you're knowledgeable about libraries in general. Would, would you say that the money for this, for. For acquisition-related expenditures? Is typical for a library our size? Or is it underfunded or is it overly generous? I mean, where, where would you? Or is it underfunded or is it overly generous? I mean, where, where would you? Line it up in terms of comparison to other? Other library systems of our city's size.
That's a really great question. Um, the effort, we're. We're, we're typical um for a government-funded um. Library. If, if, if you look at our neighbors that are outsourced. Their budgets are really low. Um, and you could find this information on the California State Library. Um, they, they do, um, they give us, um. They, they calculate our rates. We, we submit all of our statistics. They calculate how much we spend per, per resident in. In our population. We um, we spend about, or I want to say our number's forty dollars. Give or take per person. Uh, Riverside County spends about twelve dollars. Rancher Mirage spends. Three hundred dollars, something like that. Um. So it's hard to compare to our neighbor Rancher Mirage. It's hard for us to compare to Riverside County, but if you, if you go to the California State Library. Um, statistical database and you find libraries of similar populations. We're, we're very average on, on our level that we. Provide service for people.
As the other librarian on this call, I, I, I just have to say that it's, it's a terribly slippery slope when you start. Talking or negotiating the materials budget. The materials budget is the heart and core of the budget. It should always, we should always be advocating for more money spent in that. Area, not less, or even negotiate that amount of money. Because materials keep going up every year, and the moment we start sliding behind. Even the national standard or the state standard, we get in trouble. Um, I think that that is one, that is one pot of money. We should just always stand over and ask for more, if anything.
Well, Ed, Ed, I'm glad you, you said that because the intent of my question along these lines. Was to port, was to support that very point. Right? The heart of a library is its collections. And if we don't um continue to invest. In updating and for that matter, expanding our collections, well, you know, what's, what's the point ultimately? Uh, so I, I, I heartily agree with you, and that really is the thrust of my point and, and even asking about this.
The only question I have, and I, I, you know, I'm fiscal conservative, even though I'm, everything else is social liberal, but uh very conservative fiscally. When, when I look at the trend of what was spent every year. And I don't know, was that a re, is that because the budget was cut? And that's all they gave you then? And, and I guess the real question now is it's, it's really a jump to go from about not that much, from three ninety nine to four thirty four. Um, but I mean, if, if the city council were to ask you to show the, the, the expenditure sheet totaling. Four hundred and thirty four thousand or something close to it, could you do that reasonably well? I mean, can you, can you document or justify, not document, can you justify that request with expenditures, I guess?
I'll tell you what that is. That's twenty five thousand dollars for Palm Springs Speaks and ten thousand dollars for the furniture. That's really what we're talking about in, in my increase in that line item.
Okay.
That's what that is. It's not, I didn't add anything else, really.
But Jamie, if you, I mean, if you talk to all of your, your. Where you buy your materials, they've got to be going up in price. They've already tried to quote you increases, right? So how are you, how are you including those?
I'm being fiscally conservative because I know that I can make it work in that, in that budget with those other items when. As an example, one database, we, we got a grant, so I'm saving eighty six hundred dollars, so I'll move that around to, to fill in. Those three and a half percent annual increases on my databases and. So I, I'm, I'm very confident that, that I can make this work because I always do and um.
I think you, I mean, as an advisor to you, I, I worry that, and by the way. I appreciate that, but on the other hand, when we're trying to become a world-class library, I think we need to be clear what it's going to cost. To be a world-class library. And I think that the moment you start finding ways to save the city money. They're going to look at this request and go, well, Jeannie, find the money if you want a secretary instead of them paying for it. So I think that we need to be really clear that this is what we need. This, this is how much it's going to cost, and we all get behind it along with the community that will get behind it. That's.
You know, this, the other thing is that the. The library needed a new roof a few years back, and so the city said, take it out of the trust fund, right? That, those are the types of things that the library trust fund should not be used for. That's housekeeping. That's the city's problem. They need to take care of those things. So I think that the more we try and make Jeannie budget her money and save money. It only gives the city uh more opportunity to say, well, you can budget, you can work on less and less and less. And what they did when they cut during the pandemic. What she's asking for now is just bringing us up to really normal, right? To what we should have been. And like you said, Ed, we have these grand, grand wishes for this wonderful library. And then, you know, then we're going to worry about, you know, this budget. We're going to need to expand the number of people working in the library. Personnel is going to get bigger. We're going to have even better programs coming, right? I mean, we want this, we want our library to be amazing, and so we're going to need more money. That's just the facts. We can't operate on, you know, last year's budget or the year before that. Every year it's got to increase. It has to.
I, I will also say that um I, I see that the renovation is coming, so I also know that some of our costs.
Yeah.
Will have some savings when we're closed and. There will be some things that will happen, so.
Stop saying that.
No, I, I feel, I, I'm, I'm, I've been doing this, I've been doing this for twenty years. I've been doing.
Oh, I've done it too. I'm just saying that you're doing their jobs for them. And I think that, by the way, you're a good citizen and I appreciate that. I think that, that. We need to be clear, this is what it's going to cost, and if they say, we need you to sharpen your pencil, Jeannie, and find other ways to come up with them, okay. That's right, but I think, I, I think you're doing, I think the best service is to say, here's what it will cost for us to achieve the goals of the community. You know, and.
I, 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 I don't want to sacrifice. Collections and circulating materials and reference works. For the sake of anything else, because that's the heart of the program. I've said my piece. I'll let it go and act right.
All right, thank you, Dave. And I agree with what everybody's saying. The only thing is. And right, Jean, we don't have any say on the uh main library budget. But I'm sure maybe one of the council people might ask why the actuals in twenty twenty two. Have gone up sixty percent, if not more. For your twenty twenty three, your twenty twenty three to your twenty twenty four. It's just that that one is a jump and you were fully staffed for twenty twenty two, except for your administrative assistant, but I think everybody was brought back from the cutbacks. You just need to explain it. It just, to me, it's a large jump.
I did add a position, I added a position this year, so my, my salary did go up this year. Um, the materials and supplies, that one, I, I'm. We lost about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in our budget, so. We've, we've slowly put that back. We didn't put it all back immediately. I asked for a little bit and then I asked for the rest, so. That may be what you're seeing.
That's, that might be.
Well, the last, the last few years, we've sat through budget discussions at city council, and I've been there. I mean, I think that, that everybody, including the city council, recommends there are some things even out of their control. There are negotiated contracts when it comes to uh personnel that are pushing this budget number up as well, too, that you have to include. I mean, forty thousand dollars alone that I'm sure you, you had no say in. That has to go to fringe benefits and to the increased cost of having staff. So I think that there, that's a big argument there. And then you add on top of having been a publisher for thirty years of my life. They go up every year and everything they have to. So just the core of your budget is going to increase. And you're, you've been, you've been programmed to find ways to make that happen, so you can have it. I think you have an opportunity with our community, the foundation, the friends, people on this phone call. To stand before city council and give it a good old try of, we need the money. You know, I really do, and before you start trying to find ways to save, at least let us try. To get the message across that we need this money to achieve this, this goal.
And this isn't, I, I, and I will just also add, this isn't completely hard set in stone either. This was the first draft, so. Um, I haven't even input these numbers in to have.
Well, but, but, but the philosophy that, that Ed is espousing, and you've converted me in this call, Ed, so. You're a good preacher. Uh, you've convinced me that that's exactly the position we need to take, and I see other heads nodding as you're talking. Um, and, and it's really, it's just philosophically, Jeannie, how you put the budget together and make the request as opposed. And I know it's tough. It's almost like not being a good steward, you know, but at the same time, you want to push the city to fund what they should be funding, and this is really what Ed is saying. And, and I, I'm, I, okay, I come around to your way of thinking, Ed. You're on mute.
Any more?
The other thing we have to think about, guys, is that if we've got a foundation charged out there with raising money from our community. They're gonna, first question is, well, what's the city paying for? You know, if I'm going to give you a million dollars. I don't, I don't want to buy toilets. I want to buy things that are going to contribute to the overall benefit of this community. That's the city's responsibility is to pay for the, the basic part of any service, whether it be a park, whether it be a police station, whatever. So we've got to be very careful, I think, about this, because it could get out that, you know, we're, we're saying. The foundation, I, I think we could hamper the foundations of fundraising as well around this.
But were you suggesting earlier a modification? I think, Ed, that the hundred, or the million dollars we were talking about, not go to the city. But go to the foundation and be encouraged to be matched. I mean, that's one major recommendation you made to this. That's a significant recommendation. And I think, Craig, we have to consider that as an amendment to the.
I want to close off on the main library. Any more discussion and then we'll move to the library trust fund. Okay, let's move to library trust fund because I have some comments and Ed just made his comment and you are now speaking, Al.
Oh, no, that, I already did the outline of it. Uh, I think it was sufficient uh in terms of what was outlined there. With one exception, and that would be Ed's suggestion earlier, um, I can support that. Not give it to the city, but give it to the foundation. And, and Juanita, who was on the task force, the ad hoc group with me, is nodding yes. That we would agree with that, then move that to the foundation instead of the city. And, and, and with the somehow description, we can't tell them how to spend the money, but. To try to use that as a matching to raise an additional amount, so. Um, that would be, that would be a major change from what was presented here, so.
Okay, the concern, I, I have a number of concerns. One, uh, according to this, we've expended all the money in the, in the trust. And we're now of our responsibilities.
Well, we had that discussion too, and let me turn to Jeannie. We have no, we're supposed to spend it down anyway. So uh, Jeannie, why don't you explain it better, or Juanita, you can explain it even better than I can. I mean, because we had the very same question and discussion, but. Which one of you has the better handle on explaining this, Jeannie or Juanita?
Well, I'll just, um, I say that, um, the city asks that we budget and budget just means. Each dollar a place to be, not just in the cash account allocated. Um, so the future library projects account is technically your unallocated funds. Just funds that don't really have an assignment or a project. And the Croppets or Trust donation is earmarked, so it has to stay separate. And it's all going to show up as Croppets or Trust donation. It's just, it's got its own account number. Because they have a special restriction on their donation.
Well, but I think what, what Craig is saying, and once, and, and the question we all discussed. Is we're, we're spending it down to a hundred and seventy six thousand. There's very little left for a rainy day, where the balance right now is supposed to two million. So I mean, that's really, I think, his question is. What happens if something happens? And we only have a hundred and seventy six thousand. Is that kind of capturing your question, Craig, or?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's really the question.
But this money really wasn't intended as a rainy day fund. This was something to improve the library. People donated this because they wanted a better library. They wanted to improve what we have now. Not rainy day. A rainy day fund is a new roof that the city of Palm Springs should be responsible for.
Juanita, I'm not arguing with that, but. Jeannie may come to us next week and say, our systems are all down. We need to get new systems. We need them now. You don't have the money to do that. Because it's allocated out. What happens if all the computers went down?
That, that I would ask my city, who is responsible for that stuff, to take care of it. And what, what's happening now is that they are leaning hard on you to take care of things that. Um, are really their responsibility. You're, you're, you're supposed to be the supplement, not the.
Yeah, the thing is, if the, if the fire department's computers all went down. There's no trust fund to jump in and save them. The city will have to jump in and save.
Right, right.
Feel like we are just as important um as all the other um city facilities that, that the city funds. So I, I just don't, I just don't believe in that idea that this trust fund should be for, used for that.
Yeah, I think it should be used for a variety of things, but this is not leaving us enough money to do if something else comes up. There may be some other new invention or something out there that Jeannie would like to have. That is not typical for other libraries, but we're going to be special and we're going to want to purchase that thing.
Craig, I'm just curious, do you have a number in mind that you would be comfortable with? And I, as you, as you would have expected, I raised this question, but what's the number?
Okay.
What number are you comfortable with?
The library foundation amount, I, I'm uncomfortable with five hundred thousand. Because I'm saying that's this year's budget. Are they expecting a check from us for five hundred thousand this year? I'm not comfortable doing that, giving them one quarter of the budget when they have a new board that's kind of forming together. I'd like to give them a little bit of money each year. And, and see how they do, and have them come to us and say, hey, we want to do this. This is going to cost fifty thousand. As opposed to writing them a check for five hundred thousand. The other thing is, I'd like, or it says library renovation, I would like to put that under matching. And it could be matching with the foundation, it could be matching with somebody else, it could be even be matching with the city. Where they're going to give us X amount of dollars. We want them to give us more dollars, so we can say, we'll match you one to three. Would you be willing to put in three if we put in one? Do something a little bit more creative so that we can squeeze more money out of the city. Because we know this infrastructure money we're going to be spending, which is how much now? Eighteen thousand, eighteen million? Jeannie? Jeannie?
It's to be determined.
How much money right now is?
Um, thirteen.
Okay, and that's just the inside. If we can get some more money out of the city and maybe use the trust money for that, then maybe we can do some more enhancement part.
Juanita has a comment, yeah.
We, we talked about, I mean, we've talked about already, but the foundation using it as a way to get more money, matching fund. Which is what Ed said, right? I mean, I think that's a wonderful thing. The five, the, the five hundred thousand that we were talking about, we didn't talk about specifics. So certainly there can be something in place where the money is given in increment. It's not given all at once. And that wasn't my idea. I don't know about you, Al, but I didn't. I wasn't saying, let's write him a check for five hundred thousand. We were just saying, this is something they're asking for. And probably something, the amount it's going to take for them to get this endeavor off the ground. But we never talked about specifically giving them five hundred thousand all at once. I mean, it could be done in increments. It doesn't. And all at once, that's, I'm not opposed to doing anything like that. Um, also not opposed to that million being used, like Ed said, to see if we can get people to match that amount. But I, but I, I do believe that this money needs to be used to the benefit of the renovation. In however, whatever form it's being used, it needs to go to.
I'd agree with Juanita on all of those points, yeah.
Other comments?
Well. Uh, to follow up on what Juanita just said. Um, we've touched over this lightly in previous conversations, and perhaps we need to actually. Put it on the agenda. That is a discussion about how in the. Ongoing fundraising for the new or renewed library. Ongoing fundraising for the new or renewed library. That we also replenish a trust fund. Um, you know, in all my years in nonprofit, I've preached the gospel of endowments, which people, you know, regularly evade and invade. And whether they have it or want to have it. Uh, and. You know, this is in a sense, the, the library's endowment. Well. You know, don't hold too strictly to that term. The point is. Uh, we should really be thinking not only about getting the library done, but in the long run. How can we re- refresh, renew this trust fund as well? I, I hear Ed.
I, okay, Ed, did you? I, I just want to say, I agree with you, David, on the endowment concept. Uh, the organizations I belong to all have one. And when you hit the hard times, that, that helps shop.
And I've always argued for endowments. The problem is the return on endowments. Of what we have is would be miniscule. We, we wouldn't have much, that's the problem right now with endowments. All you can do is spend the, the earnings from it, the interest, basically. Uh, and you don't really have a good return at this point, and that's, that's the argument against endowments at the current time, so.
Well, there's no reason why we can't charge our foundation with helping us replenish that trust fund. Once this project is starting to move on, there is no reason why we can't ask the foundation. You know, we need to, um, continue to feed that trust fund. Maybe that would cause us to find a different purpose for the trust fund. Once we feel really confident that our foundation's gonna take care of those things that maybe the city always expected us to do, like roofs and things. You know, we can say that that trust fund is defined as a, a different type of, of investment that we've never had before. If that makes sense, and you know, then we ask our foundation to help us go out and. Find people that want to invest in that trust fund or whatever endowment, whatever you want to call it. But I, I, I agree that it's, I don't think we want to spend it down by any means. I think that, I think the next phase for this board. Is to talk about what does that trust fund look like once we have this wonderful foundation pumping money into the org. Into the library, meeting the needs that we have for the library, infrastructure and facilities. What, what's our role here? Um, and what do we need to, to focus on? So, good point.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that the foundation would be the perfect entity to put more money into the trust. I personally don't want to do, you know, become a, a foundation that is also doing fundraising. I mean, not a foundation, sorry, a, 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 a trust that is also doing fundraising. We're not gonna go into fundraising. It has to be the foundation, or if the friends wanted to, you know, contribute to the. Um, the trust to bring that up, that would be something else, but I personally don't think that. The live, that, uh, that the trust fund members need to go out and start raising money. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Um, I just wanted to add, I, I feel like, um. Historically, the long-term goal of the trust fund, like Juanita said, was to. Um, for the benefit of the library, and I feel like. Raising, we have one point seven million dollars and we need to allocate some of it to the renovation. Because that's the point. The point of the money was to raise money to renovate this library. We need to tell the city. We are committed to this project and put, put the money behind it. And then the, the long-term goal is that the foundation eventually takes the place of this fund. The foundation becomes the fundraiser, the one who develops the endowment, the one who supports all of the, all of our needs. That are supplemental to our existing budget, so. The goal of this, of the trust fund is to spend it for the library and not hold it. Um, like Juanita said, it's not a rainy day fund. It's, it's a. You all can say what it's for, but I believe it needs to be for the renovation. And we need to, and we've got three years to spend it, so, um. You know, you either pledge it now and, um, decide where, which place is gonna go, or. Or whatever, you, you know, you pledge money for the Wellwood Murray Memorial Library renovation as well, so I think, uh, it's. You need to say what it's for and how much you are willing to pledge.
What, my understanding though of the strategy this group as a body has taken. To address the renovation, to, to show its commitment to that. Is by investing in the work of the foundation, which in turn will. Uh, do fundraising to, you know, multiply those talents, to use a biblical metaphor. So it's not as if we're uninterested, or not doing anything about it. I mean, that's the, really the point of. Whether it's five hundred or one hundred or one million in the, in the, um, on the foundation line.
I don't know if there's any support for this, but, uh, I'd, I'd like to recommend that we lower the amount of money, go into the foundation. And move the money into the library renovation. This would be a fluid budget. This would be a temporary move, and then if we want to give more money to the foundation, then we can give more money to the foundation.
How much are you recommending we give to the foundation?
I'm saying in the line item right now, give them two hundred thousand. They can come back to us with other proposals for additional funds. But I also want to see some proof for the money we have. If we're getting a dollar per dollar turn back, it's, to me, it's a, not a good investment.
You mean a matching dollar for dollar?
If, if we give them two hundred thousand, they give us two hundred thousand back.
Right.
That's not what we want to be.
Well, no, 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 you would expect four hundred thousand if it's a match.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, a minimum of four hundred thousand.
So.
So, we're going to, so we're telling the foundation, we're gonna give you two hundred thousand dollars to begin with. And, but you can always come back and ask for more.
Right.
So then, at that time, we would decide whether we want to give them more or not. But they have that option. It's not just two hundred thousand, do what you can with it.
Yeah, based upon their performance, basically.
Right.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that proposal, Craig. I, I don't know about Juanita, but I'm fine with that.
Other board members, trustees? Ed?
I, I don't know if I support that, um. I feel like, not so much the dollar amount, Craig, for the, the foundation. I, I'm, I think I'm okay with that. I think that. From, I think that we should, if I'm understanding this document that came from the committee. We're setting aside a half a million dollars of our budget to fulfill, that's why I asked that question early on, to fulfill a. Foundation request. If you're worried that the foundation's gonna say, oh, they budgeted a half a million dollars, we're gonna ask for a half a million dollars. Um, I, I understand that, but I mean. They may come back and say, we need two hundred and fifty thousand, and we give them the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Are you concerned that they're gonna ask for a half a million because we have it in the budget and that's why you want to reduce it, or? What, what's your concern about reducing it? I, I don't, I guess I'm not following you.
He wants more money, I think, bound, the, and balance is what you're after. You're worried about ending up with a hundred and seventy-nine thousand or whatever. Uh, as too little, was that an accurate reflection, Craig?
That, that's part of it. The other thing is, um. I don't know if it's good motivation for them to know that they have a half a million dollars in their pocket already. I think better motivation is that we will support different activities as they come forward, that we feel are gonna be successful. Because when we looked at that original request for five hundred thousand dollars. We had some concerns and questions about it.
Exactly.
Right now, with this budget, we're giving them a check.
I don't see it that way. I, 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 I don't see it that way. I still think that, that discussion is not done yet. If they came in tonight and said, we need a half a million dollars, I don't see anybody on this, this picture's in front of me. That would write them a check for a half a million dollars without scrutinizing that request and making sure it's what they really need and what we feel they. They should get, so I, I'm not as worried about that, if that's your concern. I think that. Um, but I think you're saying the same thing. We're gonna put three hundred, and if you come back and ask for more, we're gonna consider more. What's the difference? I, I don't, that's where I guess I'm struggling.
Well, it seems to me there's a difference between a budget like this that shows an intended maximum possible allocation. And, uh, the approval of a given expense at any given time. And we might say, we, let, let's say we kept five hundred in there, but we might actually only disperse two hundred and twenty-four.
Right, right. I, I guess that's what I'm, 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 I, I, by the way, I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, Craig, at all. I, I own, I know you're, you've always been concerned about the request from the foundation, but I think that. I, I don't think that we would just simply write them a check without. Fully agreeing that the check we write is what they, what they should get and what we should be able to give them now. With our restrictions, with our direction of how they should spend it. Uh, whether it's a hundred thousand or five hundred thousand, um, I feel like we're more in control of than that.
Are we allowed to tell them how to spend it? I thought we weren't.
Well, if it's our money, I think we can give them a restrictive fund. We say, you know, you can use this hundred thousand dollars for this purpose. That's anybody who gives them money. It could be restrictive in how they.
I, I, I just was under a different impression, but that's fine. I like your interpretation.
Invest it.
I, I don't know that we are going to actually tell them how they can spend it, right? They're going to present. What they're going to do, how they plan on spending it, and then we can say, well, we think that's a terrible plan. Or we can say, yes, we think that's a great idea. Here you go, here's your two hundred thousand dollars, or whatever it is that they're requesting at that moment. But not telling them how to do it, just agreeing with their method or not agreeing with their method of, of raising money.
Well, I remember the session we had on the last request. I mean, we were very concerned about some of their things and went and sent that back to them and said, no, we're not. We're not gonna pay for this, we're not gonna pay for that, right? So, I mean, we've already kind of had this exercise where we just didn't write them a check for their request. We, we told, we sent them back to the drawing board. And we now have an MOU that's gonna be in place. It's gonna even be a better tool for us.
That's true.
To, uh, give them money, but I mean, I, I just. Whether, if we close the door to the full amount, Craig, I just want to make sure that we understand that it is our foundation. I've said it a million times. You're sick of me saying it. But if they come back and, and they have a worthwhile that we're still gonna consider giving them more money. And I just don't, I think that we need to support the program if it's gonna meet the needs of the library.
And I agree with you, but when I looked at that five hundred thousand dollar request earlier, there was a lot of question marks I had. That I, that I didn't want to fund, so by saying. Giving them the five hundred now, it's not looking like we're, we were making any cuts on that five hundred original request.
But we're not, but at the same time, we're holding them accountable. We're not writing the check until they present a plan that we agree to. It's what. I'm understanding both Juanita and, and, and Ed had said. I'm fine with that. Uh, subject to a, a, a plan on how they do it, with the understanding the intent is to use it as a matching, whatever incentive. Uh, to get more money, but yeah, I, I guess with the caveats that both Juanita and Ed have outlined, I'm comfortable with it, so.
All right, uh, can I have a motion, please?
Well, Craig, did, are you gonna amend the, are you amending the budget? I mean, uh, uh, you're, cause you're, on the table right now, we have that you.
I did not have a second.
Okay.
It died.
No, it died. Uh, uh, then I would propose, I guess, on behalf of what we did. Uh, that we accept the budget changes, or the budget of the changes, I don't know how best to word this, is outlined. In the February first memorandum, uh, from genie to the library board of trustees, based upon the meeting that Juanita and I had with her. That you, uh, and we adopt those recommendations with one exception. Um, and that is that the five hundred thousand. That was, that was, rather than going to the city, go to the foundation. That would be the one, one change to that. I can clean the wording up to that, but that's the sense.
That's not right.
What was the last part you said about?
I'm not sure I understand.
Was the last part, you said a mi- the million dollars?
Or we had, no, no, I'm sorry, the five hundred thousand. I, I'm sorry, yeah.
No.
Oh, wait a minute, yes. No. We did talk, it, no, it does say the five hundred thousand. I'm, I'm confusing myself now. This meeting's.
Never going to the city.
Yeah, the concern was about what, what to do with the library renovation money, who that was.
That was it, the library, and that was the one, yeah.
I just think if we leave it as library renovation, I think that gives us the flexibility.
Okay, fine. That makes it easier, yes.
Everyone?
Yep, yep. Then basically, it's, it's agree, or, or endorsing, or, uh, recommending. The budget changes is suggested in the proposed budget, um, as outlined in that memorandum of February first.
All right, so it's, uh, your page three.
Yes.
Uh, material seven A, page three.
Oh wait, did we have a motion on that?
Yeah, you made the motion.
Right, did we have a second though on the vote, I guess?
Waiting for the second.
So, question, um, on the library renovation, um. The million dollars, did you say where you would like to direct that, or just create an account that's earmarking that money for the renovation?
Yes, create an account that earmarks the money.
Uh, like the memo says, okay. But does it say who it goes to? It just said it's earmarked.
Right.
That's the critical difference.
Yeah, it's, it's written here.
Yeah.
Okay, so well, you have a first, and David gave a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Okay, uh, Craig Borba?
No.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passed four to one with, uh, Craig Borba voting no.
Right, and I just wanted to put more money into the area of renovation. So, explanation of my quote. Okay, so let's go to seven B. Uh, library infrastructure renovation, discuss and approve a scope of service to be listed. Request for qualifications, that is in your agenda. And it is.
Page seventeen. In your packet.
Yes.
Back page.
Uh, genie, do you want to take us through this, please?
Sure, um, the, um. The city has, uh, wants to be absolutely clear. Or get your clarity to make sure that we have included all of the, uh, recommendations that you have. When we create the scope of work for a request for qualifications. For the pro- for the renovation project, so, uh, I just, just want to make sure that, um. As it's listed here, that, that I've captured all of the things that you all are interested in having designed and. Price quoted from architects and designers. And, does that make sense? I just want.
Yeah, I, I thought it was a pretty complete list. I, I don't personally have anything to add, but.
I wanted to make sure that I captured what you wanted. Um, it doesn't necessarily mean that this work will all happen, but at least it will become part of the scope of service. They will design for it and then come up with a price. That we can then, and we, the city, the city can then decide that's the way they want to go, or if, if they need to face some of that.
And whoever bids also can expand beyond just what the minimum requirements are as well, so.
Yeah, they can give their professional recommendations too.
Right, right.
You know.
Um.
Whatever.
Genie, I had brought up earlier that can the design include. That the facility be plumbed, electrical and everything else. So that if we want to add an additional building, it'd be an easy hookup?
Yes, uh, you did say that, um. Well, I think I can say something about future.
Mm-hmm.
Proof, if you will, the, um. Electrical and plumbing services. For potential expansions. I did request an expans- expansion though, and the.
Yeah, I see it under S.
The event space.
Yeah, S you have it. I just want to make sure that the, with the money that we have. We can design it so it'd be easy to. Yeah, as you have it, I just want to make sure that the, with the money that we have, we can design it so it'd be easy to add to the building.
Right.
The other thing, I'm sorry to bring up a horse we beat to death. Does the library trust fund budget that we just made? Would library renovation, does that leave out the fray building or does that include the fray building?
The city has budgeted the money from Measure J for the J C Frye building renovation. So they're, they're responsible for that building renovation. Budgeted in their five-year plan.
Is that include the interior?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So, it is a different price point.
Hey, so, you can add, you can add my concern in there with the permission of the other trustees, is. Is that okay?
Yes. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
All right, thank you, so if you can make that addition. To this memorandum and we need to vote on this, is that correct? Yes, we do.
So, yes, and then what, I'll just tell you what, what will happen next is that. I will work with, I will work on a staff report for. I'll work with procurement and engineering and we'll, we'll, we're going to then ask the city for permission to put out an RFQ. With these items in the scope of service and then they'll get either a chance to just approve it. Or comment and make changes of their own, so we want to make sure that you all have put in. You know, everything that you've asked for.
Well, I, I, I make motion to adopt this or approve that list with Craig's addition.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Juanita. Any further discussion on this, any other additions anybody would like to make? Okay, see none? Okay, roll call, please.
Craig Borba?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero, I think that was the fastest, easiest motion I've ever seen.
Because it was so completely written out with the level of detail, alphabetically, I might add, I like the alphabetical arrangement, quite frankly.
I, that's my, that's the library, I mean.
It was your presentation, Genie, your presentation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Roman numeral eight, trustees, staff comments, future agenda items. Uh, Genie, you have one future agenda item.
MOU.
Thank you. Okay, with the discussion that we had at our last trustees meeting. A number of concerns were brought up by the foundation to change the MOU. So, Genie has sent the MOU to the attorneys, they're going to consolidate it. And then we need to review it. Now, the question is, do we want to review it in the subcommittee first or the ad hoc committee first? And bring it to the trustees or bring it directly to the trustees?
I would bring it directly to the trustees, I, I think we're a small enough group. But.
Ed?
Hi.
On that, because you were on the sub, the ad hoc.
I agree, I think the subcommittee's work probably is done at this point, so, and we've all been familiar with it, why not bring it back and let's move it along and.
Yeah.
What the feedback is, I don't know if you and I would have any changes to that without wanting to come to the full board anyway, right?
Okay, any other comments on this? Juanita, is your hand up? I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm fine.
Okay. Okay, um, then let's do that, Genie, let's put it on the next board agenda and if we can get that out to the trustees. ASAP, so that discussion will go smoothly.
Sure, no problem.
All right, thank you. Other items, there is a. Ad hoc committee being set up for, I think it's next week, Genie. With the friends and the foundation regarding naming rights. So we will report that information back to the trustees at our upcoming board meeting. Uh, there's a couple of things we need to. To hammer out so that both groups work successfully together. Don't be stepping on anybody else's toes. Any other comments from trustees or staff?
I would say thank you, thank you for supporting me and my budget and the library. And you're right, we're going to make this a great place and it's going to be even better when we're finished.
Yes, you are, okay. All right, hearing nothing, I will adjourn the meeting, our next meeting is March first at five thirty. And will that still be zooming or can we meet in person so I can see what these trustees look like?
In person's fine with me.
I'll see, we'll see, we're, we still got a lot of, a lot of issues, I'm actually on a COVID exposure myself again, so. It's not, I, I tested negative, I'm, I just have to wear a mask, but. Yeah, it's, it's still going around, so we're still having issues amongst ourselves.
But it's going to go around for the rest of our lives, we're going to end up with annual vaccinations, that's what's coming out of Washington.
Say no, say no. Okay, I'm going to stop recording, but hopefully, we'll see if we can be in person, I'm not sure, but.
Thank you.